That's right.
Oh, thanks.
Let's go. We stand and join to adjourn. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll now call to order our regular school board meeting of independent school districts number 544. Our first item on business is to establish our quorum.
Ms. Hermes?
Present.
Matt Limpkin here. Steve Bigasov here. Melie Cole.
Here.
Blaine Danielson here. Natalie Kooten.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item is to seek a motion to approve the agenda. I move that we approve the agenda. All right, is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. That's approved. And then we'll go right into reports from the various board member committee obligations. Starting with myself, the Special Education Cooperative has met twice since I last reported on their activities. In June, we had a general board meeting and we had election of officers and restatement of our various operating procedures. And I retained my role as chair there. We talked, we had a director's report that talked about the physically impaired and although that isn't a very high number of students. Shannon Erickson, the director of Special Education Cooperative, gives us an update on various aspects and talked about how we manage that throughout the member districts and cooperative. And other than that, there was nothing too exciting. She noted the public service announcement that comes out to advertise the services that the Special Education Cooperative services are free and they call that Child Find and talked about how that's done every year to advise people of the service available. And then we met again last Monday and Shannon Erickson spoke about reading proficiently by third grade, which is a legislative mandate. And so I imagine we'll be talking about that more here. And in relation to the Special Education Cooperative, she talked about the different reading disorders and how that might be managed through the cooperative. And then personnel maneuvers, so that was the norm there. For negotiations, there is no update. We haven't met, there's nothing substantial nature to report there. And then lastly, Region One Cooperative, we met and we'll talk a little bit later today about School Messenger, one of the services that were routinely updated on in the course of those business meetings. And talked about all the other products and services available to the member districts and approved a compensation package for the staff at Region One, an overall percentage rate of 2.71 for the upcoming year. So went through the various, it's interesting to do the negotiations there, it's quite simple.
Cut it dry.
Huh?
Cut it dry.
Yeah. So otherwise, there wasn't a whole lot of other operational information. So any questions on my reports?
How often do you guys do the compensations? Is that every two years?
Every year.
Every year?
Mm-hmm. And because it's not a union operation, the director brings forward his proposal. And then one of the things we do differently there that's kind of unique is one-time bumps for specific employees sometimes related to their change in duties or whatever like that. So kind of.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. And then we'll keep moving and next, Melissa Hines.
The curriculum review committee doesn't meet again until October. And then I don't have anything to report on legislative meetings on.
All right. Very well. Natalie Knutson?
Neither policy or wellness has met, so I have nothing to report.
All right. Blaine Danielson?
Nothing on the meet and confer. We'll probably set something up once the school year starts on that. Buildings and grounds, not much there other than still waiting. We should probably see, I'm guessing in the next couple of weeks here, the matting. Mark maybe can correct me on that. But as far as the playground itself down there, it looks really good. So I'm sure kids are waiting to get down and check it out. Work has started on the building down there, so you'll probably see some commotion going on down there with trucks moving and different things like that. But should start seeing a little bit more activity down there now. And then regarding the 544 Foundation, we just met last Thursday and the 13th. For this Friday, of course, the big thing coming up is the Legends Golf Tournament, which is a big fundraiser for the 544 Foundation. I think as of last Thursday, they had 22 teams signed up, so I haven't heard of any more updates. But anybody that's interested in playing or getting a foursome can contact the golf course out there, get ahold of Tony Rens, and they can get you information on that. And then following that, there'll be a supper. I think they've got some side lunch items. And right now, I think they've got about 150 people signing for the supper, so it's really good. And member update, they're at 424, so which is really good. So they got about a year to pull in the 76 yet. And then here's a new potential, our newborn member coming on board, Chris Neeler, and she replacing Wayne Swenson, who is going off the board. So that's about what I have.
Just filling in that today, the mats are supposed to show up.
Oh, thanks.
Great.
Thanks.
All right. Any questions for Blaine? Okay. Steven Bigasov?
Staff development hasn't met and we won't meet until after the school starts, so that's all I have.
All right. Matt Limpkin?
Minnesota High School, we just on the June 5th, I was going to bring back to committee what they actually approved for that advisory committee. They had approval of it, but they didn't have what it was on the minutes, so I called to get it. And for gymnastics, there is going to be a change to the section and who goes to state. They're changing it from, currently it's the first, second, third, and fourth place finalists that go plus the first, second, third, and fourth all-around finalists goes. They're going to be changing that now to the top three all-around gymnasts plus the next three highest-scoring gymnasts on a given event. And so there's going to be a little bit of change. A part of it was is because of depending on the section or whatever, you could have those that were in the top four not be in the top four in the event, the all-around. And so they would have disparity about how many gymnasts is actually going to state. And so they feel that this is going to bring some, try to bring some evenness to it and also help with this to state run. Overall, it was approved by the schools that, recommended to be approved by a survey that was sent out to schools. There was 132 surveys that were sent out. Eighty-eight schools responded, 82 said yes, and eight, six said no on their votes. So overall, the state is in approval of going in with this. So that was a change that was made. So our section is very competitive, as I think everybody that knows in gymnastics, so I don't exactly know how this is going to affect our own gymnastics program, but that was a change that was approved. The other thing that was approved was wrestling, had a couple of changes. One was just in a format, and this is more for section. And this just allows, there's been a rule in place that you can only have five matches within a given day. But they're changing that because what would happen is somebody would, to get a true second, would wrestle back and would end up, in some circumstances, would end up having to wait to the second day to do, and it turns out there's additional cost. So this is to get rid of that cost, so they can hold a one-day tournament, not turn it into a two-day tournament to be able to do that. So, and that was approved. Another thing that was approved was a change in attire. They're going to allow, this was kind of interesting, and they're going to allow a wrestler to wear a undershirt, you know, it's got to be tight and stuff like that. And also, they were talking about some kind of shorts or something that they could also wear, which is kind of going to be kind of interesting. And the main reason they did this was they believe this will help increase participation in wrestling instead of just in the one suit thing. So that was kind of an interesting.
I hated those tank boots so much. I was only wrestling for two years, so that's.
Yeah. So they're hoping that this will help.
Make it comeback.
Yeah. And they say that in most practices, most wrestlers wear them anyway, so it's not like something unfamiliar. So it was kind of interesting. And then the tennis one was just kind of something about usually a single stick, which is basically from a doubles to singles, that they put a stick up to kind of make it even at 36 inches. And they're going to remove that because there's only a couple that do it now. So yeah, something with tennis, just a minor change. The other thing that was the Lakes Country Service Co-op was the Minnesota Service Cooperative. I sent more of an outline of what was talked about. I think I'm just going to highlight just the financial part that Roger Moore, who was former legislator in the Senate, leader, and Sam Walsh, who at Minnesota Rural Education Association spoke. And I think the biggest thing that I took from their talk was that this was a very aggressive budget that was passed. They had 1.6 billion in a surplus when they were all sudden done with everything they did with tax cuts and infrastructure, bonding bill and stuff like that. There was only $6 million left on the line that was left. Their anticipating was that in the 1819, that they'd have 163 million, but that was before the new forecast, well, the new revenue forecast came in, and that was actually down 260 million. So there's a little bit of caution and hopefully the economy continues to grow and that that numbers come back. The other thing that they just, he talked about is that, well, two things is that we've heard a lot about the federal government cutting Medicare, you know, Medicare. And he said that for Minnesota, this would be a severe cut and that it would impact everybody's budget, including school districts most likely because of trying to find, it would bring the owners back to the states to try to find that money. And we're talking, I thought he said about $12 billion. So it's actually not a sum of money over a deal, so it's like, so it could be over that, because they look at a 10-year span. And so it could be a significant cut to the state of Minnesota. And the other thing is is that with the aggressive budget is that in two years, it's going to be very difficult to get the same kind of formula increases that we got this last time. And he said, you know, so keep that in mind. So you're doing your budgeting.
Matt, any discussions regarding the new Secretary of Education and some of the cuts and stuff that she started to make and would like to make and how that may impact districts going forward?
You know, they didn't have, nobody brought it up directly, so I can't, and they did not bring it up. So they kind of did a recap and maybe kind of said something.
Well, even on the, what I was driving today, listening to the radio, the Medicare is not part of the new Senate plan, and so they're not cutting Medicaid. And so I don't see that happening. And then they also said, as, you know, Betty DeVos, the new Secretary of Education, you know, and even the budget from the federal government, from the president, the legislature, the Congress is saying, this is dead on arrival. I mean, they are not going to be funding dollars, you know, away from public school. And so it is, it's very, very far away, but the key thing is just keep track of it and keep lobbying, that making sure that public education is the main focus, because that's where 90, I can't even imagine, probably 95% plus of the kids in America are getting educated in public school, I would imagine. So, and you can't quote me on that, but it's a high percentage.
Matt, connect the dots for me. How does the aggressive budget of this session connect to having difficulty anticipating increases next time?
Well, basically, because if everybody remembers, the school funding is revenue, we are revenue-based, because the state funds most of us for a high percentage of our budget, it's revenue-based, it's not property tax-based. And so as the economy goes with the state of Minnesota, so does funding go. And so if revenue is down or flat, that means that the revenue that would help to fund K-12 education will also be down or flat. And so potentially, it gets to be a lot more difficult for the state to give money when they don't have the money to give. And of course, you know, right now, there's a very anti-tax, and in fact, like I, you know, said in the deal, they did do a tax cut, some of it one time. But anyways, that kind of is what they're saying is that just with the revenue forecast, because everything's based off revenue and being down 260 million, you know, that already puts potential that that could influence K-12 funding.
They just don't have the surplus. I know they would have that 1.6 billion surplus unless, but it's two years away. So it's projectional.
All right. Any other questions on Matt's reports? All right, so superintendent's.
Yes, I'm just going to explain, when we say retreat, so following this meeting, the school board has a retreat. We don't go anywhere. We brought in more comfortable chairs, and we're going to be here for a long time this morning. That's our retreat. People think of going off to a resort or everything, so we don't spend our dollars that way. So we stay right in this room for a longer period of time, but it's a very important day in our district because we worked on setting our goals, we look at reviewing our staff, new programs, lots of different things that we make decisions on that set the stage for the next coming year. And then also, this year, we have not done this, in fact, this is a new service from Middle School to School Board Association, is that all of the board members have done a self-evaluation on the board, and we will be reviewing that report first thing this morning. So excited to hear about that. So we're moving on to the agenda.
All right. Very well. Our consent agenda items include several things for consideration, including the minutes from our last board meeting on June 26, 2017, and consideration of approval for the bills and treasures report. Natalie, would you want to report?
I'll take care of that.
All right.
Matt, today, and our treasures report shows about $7.5 million in bank. 1.2 million is borrowed, so about $6.5 million is ours. That's currently inflated right at the moment, the accounting money has come in and so, but it's still a good position to be in. Bills totaled about 2.1 million. Half million dollars of that is an interest payment on one of our bonds, but otherwise, the rest of the bills seem to be in.
Very well. All right, thank you. And we have some personnel objectives here.
Yes, we're hiring Dee Monkey as our secondary school principal to continue in that position and then support our resignations. Amber Bronka, Brittany Anna Smith. Mary Anderson is our student services coordinator. Kathy Bronco as custodian. And then Rachel Kalowski is our CNA instructor. All of those people are resigning. We have hired Darlaes Hagy, who is moving from 935 to 544. Erica Reinerson and Jacqueline Olson, we're hiring those. And then we also had a head coach resignation. Tom Ubus is resigning as head girls' swimming coach. He will continue one more year as the boys' coach though this next winter. So thank him for his years of service.
Great. All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items?
Just one question mark on the treasure report. Just when is the borrowing, you know, there's a period when that borrowing will actually go away?
The borrowing gets paid back, I believe it's end of August, early September. In that timeframe.
I had a lot of people ask me about Mr. Monkey retiring and then being retired, so I wonder if you can explain that?
Sure. There is a scenario where, and we've done this quite a few times in our district, where an employee can retire, there has to be a gap in employment, and then they can reapply for a position. There can be no prior agreement, which there was not ahead of time. He did apply for the position, interviewed, and then was hired back. So it's a scenario where I think you're seeing it more and more because of the shortage of staff coming into play. There's principals, there's teachers, lots of them. So we have a number of teachers in other positions that are wanting to continue to work. The benefit for the district is you no longer have to pay teacher retirement, and it's about 7.5%. So it's a benefit to the district in the sense that you save dollars, but then you also get to keep a long-term employee who's been successful.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of approving the general consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. That is approved. We have, we have Old Business awarding the bids for the milk and related products. We had a document related to this. Is there a motion to award the bid?
So moved.
Who are you awarding it to?
To.
Class Clay.
Okay.
Thank you. Class.
Cass Clay.
Cass Clay.
Thank you.
Not Class Clay.
All right.
It's like Kemp.
Easy, easy for everyone to say.
Yes. And is a second on that motion?
A second.
All right. Any discussion?
Just went through the bidding process. Cass Clay has been a provider to us in the past, no problems with him, so.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor of awarding the milk and related products bid to Cass Clay Kemp, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. And the next objective under Old Business is to award the bid for the 2017-18 Food for the Meal Program. Is there, the winning bid for that was US Foods? Is there a motion to award that bid to US Foods?
I'll make the motion to accept the bids of US Foods for the program.
All right. And a second for that? Second. Any discussion on that? Commentary?
This is a new process for us. We went through a nutrition review here this past spring, and they found out that we need to do a procurement process. Normally, we have gone through Lakes Country Service Co-op for that, but unfortunately, US Foods has been offering better prices than Lakes Country has been able to provide. And so we got booted out last year out of Lakes Country for not doing enough quantity. So that meant we had to bid our own, and we sent out to a number of companies. We only got one back, and that was US Foods. I think that's just because of the newness of the bidding process. As you will see it here on the bidding process, we're only going from September 1st to November 30th with this bid. That's because the procurement process has quite a lengthy escalator clause that is draconian, if you want us to put it that way. So what I did is just basically, I went and bid three times throughout the year and get rid of that whole escalator clause. So the newness of it, US Foods has been our provider for several years now, and so they threw their bid in and the pricing was good. So I suggest we take it.
Any substantial change in pricing?
No.
Nothing either way?
No.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Very well. And under New Business, we'll launch into that with a couple of resolutions. I will read these slightly abbreviated, but the full text of the resolutions will be in the minutes, which will be posted on our website. The first resolution is a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the election day of a statewide election. That summarizes the entirety of what this is about. And so this is for the special election required this fall for the position not held by Ms. Hermes. So be it resolved by the Board of Independent School District number 544, state of Minnesota as follows. Number one, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Number two, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A.11, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for the school elections not held on the day of a statewide election. The following combined polling place is established to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections not held the same day as a statewide election. The combined polling place will be in the National Guard Armory for 21 Cecil Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. This combined polling place serves all territory in Independent School District number 544. Number three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A.09, the polling place will remain open for voting for school district elections not held the same day as a statewide election between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And that is summary of the resolution. Will someone offer, adopt that resolution and move for its adoption?
After the resolution, move for its adoption.
That's right. All right. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. Any discussion? Lot of words to say. We're going to have the election in November, and it's going to be at the Armory.
Like the filing, it is August 1st through the 15th, is that correct? So filing for school board is at that time, at here, at Kennedy, at the district office.
At the superintendent's office.
Yep.
All right. Clerk, will you take your role?
Matt Limpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Hermes?
Yes.
Steve Bigasov?
Yes.
Melie Cole?
Yes.
Blaine Danielson, yes. Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Very well. Great. And number two, we'll move on with the resolution calling special election to fill the school board vacancy. Whereas a vacancy exists in the office of school board member with the term expiring the first Monday in January 2019, and whereas the vacancy has occurred more than 90 days prior to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November in the year in which the vacancy occurs, kind of sounds like Dr. Seuss really. Sorry. Now, the board be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District number 544, state of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, the clerk shall accept affidavits of candidacy for this office during the same filing period as applicable to a school district general election. Number two, A, it's necessary to hold a special election to elect one individual to fill the vacancy in the term of school board members expiring the first Monday in January 2019. And B, the clerk shall include on the special election ballot the names of the individuals who file or have filed affidavits of candidacy during the period established for filing such affidavits as though they had been included by name in this resolution. And lastly, number three, the special election shall be held on Tuesday, the 7th of November 2017, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The resolution includes an example of what the ballot will look like in general, substantially that format, et cetera, et cetera. So will someone offer this resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer a resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All right. Clerk, will you please?
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Blaine Danielson, yes. Melie Cole?
Yes.
Steve Bigasov?
Yes.
Matt Limpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Hermes?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Very well. Thank you. We have certification of school bus driver competencies as of June 30th, 2017. This was required. The hours of training in additional new drivers since November, we must review and approve these. This is for the 2016-17 certification. Will someone offer this motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Otter Tail Coaches provides us the training and all the documentation, so it's, we approve this based on their documentation. So it's, uh, we approve this, uh, based on their documentation.
All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That's approved. Is there a motion to approve the 2017-18 Fergus Falls Area Special Ed Co-op, um, Number 935 Facility Lease Agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and, um, the lease is substantially the same as last year? No?
About a 3% increase, that's about it, yeah.
All right.
So that's, is that kind of standard?
It is when, it is when we're doing things.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion on this? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's approved. And the, uh, next item is to look for approval for the 2017-18 Facility Lease Agreement between the Fergus Falls Area YMCA and our school district. Will someone offer that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, Matt?
This one is, it's my, I'm, uh, this one is a little different in that, uh, for many , many years, uh, it, it stayed at the same rate and we've been on about a three-year plan to try to get the rate back up to where it should be. So the increase is, is a little larger than 3%, but, uh, still within the plan of about $500 increase per year that, uh, we've been working on. Uh, we'll get it blended out a year, a year from now.
Why do we lease the YMCA?
We lease from YMCA because, uh, we run what's called a shared time program out there where kids from, uh, the non-public schools go there for gym, uh, gym time. It's taught by our teacher and during that time period, those kids then are considered ours for funding purposes. That's why we can pay for the teacher and this is how we pay for the, for our funds.
Who's teacher that teaches that?
Jared Larson.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a, by a teacher here that's been here a couple of years.
Jared Larson.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of approving that lease, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's taken care of and, um, we have received information on the fiscal year 19 Long-Term Facility Maintenance, Maintenance, uh, Tenure Plan. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Matt. And, um, Mark, will you review that?
Sure, the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan was established here about two years ago. Um, it, it's a new funding source that is very welcome to the school district because it, uh, provided for maintenance of our existing school facilities. Uh, you cannot use it for, uh, facilities that are brand new. You have to, uh, use it for old. Um, the plan is basically to give an awareness to the, the school board about things that are upcoming and, uh, needs that within your school district. Uh, the only change I made here on the plan from a year ago was to kind of beef up the heat pump, uh, project. We did, uh, I had it in this year, but then the shed kind of became a priority, so we had to do some job with it. And so the heat pump project at Adams is our, our biggest project for next summer. Um, and, uh, that's the only change in the plan, basically. So, uh, long-term out there, a few years out, anybody's guess as to what the things will be, uh, we're kind of in a, at advantage over other school districts in that we did a major overhaul of all of our buildings, uh, less than 10 years ago. So we don't have this huge pileup of deferred maintenance that other districts do. So, but primarily we'll be focusing on roofs and, uh, interior surfaces like carpets and, and, and things like that in the future, so.
And this is, um, slightly changed from how we've done maintenance in the past because it projects it out farther, is that correct?
That's correct. It's kind of a revolving 10 years, yes.
And then it, um, it's my understanding, then the funding changed too?
Uh, yeah, the funding goes up over a period of time, so that, that helps us out as well.
Great.
It, it equals our funding, uh, a few years ago, it equals what this 25 city schools were getting. Outstate Minnesota was getting about 58 cents a square foot. The city schools were getting $2.73, I think it was, per square foot, and now we're on equal footing with them with, with, should be. So, like I said, welcome funding.
Great. All right, any other questions or discussion on this? All in favor of approving the, uh, tenure plan, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, thank you. Um, I'll look for a motion to approve the, uh, uh, payment of the Minnesota School Board Association dues and policy services renewal for 2017 and 18.
I move we, um, approve the Minnesota School Board Association dues.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Very good, thank you. And, um, looking for a motion to, um, approve the 2017-18 Memorandum of Agreement between the University of Minnesota and Crookston and our school district for college and the high school. This is an annual agreement to have two of our teachers that teach, um, college classes, um, certified and approved for that. Is there a motion to approve that memorandum of agreement?
I move we approve that memorandum of agreement.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, by far the majority of our, our classes are with Manton State right here in Fergus Falls, but, uh, we were able to get both the first and second year of, um, of, of physics with the University of Minnesota and so there are some advantages for these courses to be, uh, through the University of Minnesota, Crookston.
Okay. Yeah, is it, that they transfer better?
Uh, no, not necessarily. It, it's just that, uh, we, we couldn't get the second year physics out here for some reason and, uh, it just, uh, and these higher level courses, uh, working with them, we just thought we had better luck.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. As Superintendent Ness, uh, revealed earlier, today is our retreat, no massages, a lot talking about, um, goals and, um, different operational decision-making. So, um, we will adjourn then with the motion and then, uh, carry on for planning for the 17-18 school year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, that will be the second.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, thank you very much. Mark, adjourn.